This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Whether we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
All right, before we move to make a motion for the consent agenda, we need to remove three items. We need to remove the bills, V-02 and ACH payments to Cassandra Jones, and on stipends, B.09.a. to be voted on separately.
And that's for Cassandra Jones as well, right? Just, we're just pulling Cassandra out of that stipend.
Okay, yes.
Right, okay. All right, having pulled those two items out, I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Some.
First by Darren, second by Jill. All those in favor? And that passes five to zero. This time I entertain a motion to pay on the bills, ACH payment to Cassandra Jones.
Some.
First by Darren.
Second.
Second by Tracy. All those in favor? Four abstain. One, no. All right, at this time I entertain a motion to approve the stipend on B.09.a. to Cassandra Jones. First by Jill.
Second.
Second by Tracy. All those in favor? Four abstain. One. All right, moving right along to recognitions. First up, Dr. Wickham.
I'm actually gonna toss it to Dr. Wickham. She's going to introduce some special athletes that we have on the bench. She can come to if you want. Good evening, I'm Sarah Wickham, principal at the high school. It is my pleasure to recognize and celebrate our team for their participation in both our Job Olympics event and our Special Olympics event. I'll start first with Job Olympics. I want to give a shout out to Mr. Teegarden, Ms. Garza, and Ms. Conrad, and our entire special education team. Last year, we actually started a journey to be able to participate in the Northland Job Olympics event. Many people probably don't know, but this is a year-long process. They require you to go and attend the event, see what it's all about, learn about what are the requirements are. And so for over a year, our team has been working to make this happen for our students. And then our students really worked through a process of preparing for several months to be able to compete in this event. And the event pulls students from several schools throughout the Northland, and the focus is on different vocational skills. So I want to recognize our students who are here tonight, who are competing, but also our students who couldn't be here tonight. So I have Mr. Zay on roster. Zay earned second place for bagging groceries and second place in table setting. We also have Dakota Knappinger here, and Dakota earned first place in table wiping. And then students who couldn't be here tonight, but we certainly want to recognize, Ashton Hall earned first place in sorting recyclables and second place in sorting wares. Bryson Long earned first place in auto detailing. Amberly Seifert earned third place in laundry folding. Gabe Oakley, second place in table wiping. Shane Strack a participation ribbon. And then our entire team earned bronze in their division. So it's super proud of them. And then I also want to acknowledge and celebrate our second annual Special Olympics track meet that we held just a couple weeks ago. This was a great event where many of these students also competed. It was a great partnership with the Community Center and Parks and Rec Department. We could not do it without their support, so I really appreciate that. And I want to acknowledge Mr. Rock Herla, one of our amazing alumni. He was our emcee for the event.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Mr. Ruby with our Skills USA.
Thank you. It is my pleasure, and at this time I'd like to introduce our Skills USA sponsors, Mr. McBee and Mr. Bryant, to kind of share about our chapter's participation in the Skills State Conference last month at Lynn, Missouri. Brought home a lot of medals and are sending three kids to Nationals and got another state officer, so let them share all the details.
Good evening. Recently, April 10th through 12th, was Skills USA State Competition in Lynn, Missouri, at State Tech College. We took a total of 24 students, three advisors, Dr. Post, Mr. Bryant, and myself. In addition, Mr. Ruby come down on Saturday at four awards. Students competed in a variety of hands-on competitions, written technical tests, and leadership contests. Students did very well on the trip. They all worked hard to get to state and compete. We are proud of all the state competitors and their accomplishments, and I'm going to announce the gold, silver, and bronze medalists. So, job skill demo A, Madeline Throckmorton from Liberty North. Technical spelling, Sophia Hannigan, Liberty North. Motorcycle service technology and motorcycle tech info, Mason McConnell. Carpentry tech info, Tanner Phipps, Excelsor Springs. Mason was from Lawson, sorry, forgot to put that on there. Sheet metal tech info, Peyton Bosika, Lawson. Mason and Madeline will be both competing at Nationals for job skill demo and motorcycle service in Atlanta in June. Silver winners, EMT tech info, Samantha Shue, Excelsor Springs. Sheet metal tech info, Silas Odell, Excelsor Springs. Bronze winners, EMT tech info was Myers Anderson from Carney. Early childhood education tech info, Adriana Circo, Excelsor Springs. Sheet metal, Peyton Bosika, Lawson, Missouri. Mobile electronics installation, Aiden Brancato, Lawson. Building repair technology, Alex Maxmina, Excelsor Springs. I would like to mention one more person. Adrian Crowley ran for a state officer position and earned one this year to serve on this next term. She's from the automotive program, and we look forward to all the things she's going to do and all the great things she's going to help the state with. Special thank you to the Board of Education. Thank you guys for all your support, and Mr. Ruby for all the support for the Career Center and Skills USA. Silas is here, and Adrian. Proud of all the things the students are doing. We're a little bit different than other buildings where we serve several different school districts. So, kind of cool to be able to help support those other districts also. Thank you, guys.
All right, next up, Dr. Golden with our 24, 25 retirees.
It pleases the board. Me and my wonderful retiree assistants here would like to recognize and present our 2024, 25 retirees for their years of service in Excelsor Springs. Want to thank you for the dedication that you've shown our students, fellow staff members, the district, and our community. So we greatly value everything that you've done, and many of you have spent many years in this district, and I greatly appreciate you both personally and professionally. So, thank you. Brenda Reed, much assistant, four years in Excelsor Springs. Gina Smith, Para. She spent six years in the district. Kim Hightower, administrative assistants in many buildings, finishing at Central Office, 25 years in Excelsor Springs. She wanted to pass along that she appreciates the recognition, but she's spending tonight with her new grandbabies. Lenny Smith, the Zodiacian, 15 years in Excelsor Springs. Lois Tronick, Para Middle School, eight years in Excelsor Springs. Steve Richardson, Maintenance, 28 years in Excelsor Springs. Aaron Holst, Physical Education, shared a locker room with them for about eight years. 31 years in Excelsor Springs. Eric Marshall, Activities Director, six years in Excelsor Springs and 25 years in Education. 28 years, sorry. Kathy Kenzie, Library and Media Specialist, 31 years in Excelsor Springs. Marty Markers, Special Education, 24 years in Excelsor Springs, 26 years in Education. Stephen Howe, Science Teacher, three years in Excelsor Springs, 31 years in Education. And a former board member. And a former board member. So all together, standing in front of you in the one-stop presence tonight, we have 181 years dedicated to the Tigers. 231 total years in Education dedication. Thank you, guys.
Everybody behind went down. Kathy, turn around. I'm sorry.
All right, on our last recognition, but not least, it is our Classified Employee of the Month, Dr. Golden.
It pleases the board, I would like to share with you the Classified Employee of the Month nominated by all of the Central Office administrative assistants. Mr. Garrett Porter for the Technology Department, served Central Office and any other needs throughout the district. Kind words that I've been sharing on this behalf. Garrett is always so professional and kind in all he does for us. He goes above and beyond in making sure the problems are resolved quickly and correctly. He is truly a valuable asset to the district. We greatly appreciate Garrett. Also, always so pleasant, professional, kind, fixes everything and anything, and gets here before you even finish most tickets. Goes above and beyond, totally valuable beyond estimation. We are the luckiest building in the district to have his support. And last but not least, Garrett is awesome. He's always quick to reply, and my issues are always resolved within minutes. He never gets upset when most of the issues I have are his or theirs. Thank you, Garrett. I told him we would allow 10 minutes for his speech, but he tried to make it so.
Yay, Garrett. All right, moving along, MSBA W report.
Welcome to the May edition of the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report. If you are a newly elected board member, welcome aboard. If you've been around a while, this time of year is your chance to keep growing with multiple training opportunities from MSBA's Leadership Development Team. MSBA's Leadership Development Associate Executive Director Catherine Whitaker says that new board member training is about more than just fulfilling those training hours.
So the first big thing is new board member training. That is something that is legally required in state statute. 18 and a half hours, which is a lot of training, but I think that's good. It's really important. It's also a great way to make connections. We are an association for school board members and then also get connected to other school board members who are serving for the first time as well.
During MSBA Summer Summit, there will be a workshop just for school board presidents.
And so during that workshop, we're going to cover parliamentary procedure, which I think is great for anyone who's a new leader or someone who's vice president for the first time, looking to be a president at some point, just to know how to run meetings, because you may have to do it if the president's not there. We're also going to talk about how to onboard new board members during the workshop, and then also just talk about leadership as a board president in general. It's really hard to do that job, and I don't think we talk about it enough.
For all board members, Catherine says that there are some misconceptions about refresher training and when to take that.
So there's a common misconception about both kind of new board member training and refresher training, that somehow it lines up like with the calendar year or with the school year. But actually, refresher training or board required training resets every election, so in April. And so the new board member training begins now, and so same with refresher training. Refresher training, the new one begins now for '25, '26. And so even if you finished refresher training a month ago, in March, or two months ago in March, it's now time to go ahead and do the '25, '26. You might as well knock it out now, so you don't have to do it until the next election in April.
Catherine also says that as summer approaches, it's a great time for boards to engage in professional development.
So districts kind of take the summer off, or students get the summer off. But teachers actually do professional development. Administrators do professional development. I believe school board membership also takes the summer to do professional development. And having a summer retreat, I think, is totally valuable, especially if you have a new superintendent, having that retreat with them in July to set expectations, you're onboarding a new employee. I think that's really important. But also, you may have a new board or a new board member. And so getting you guys as tight as you can during the summer when it's a little less stressful will really help you all survive the ebbs and flows of the school year moving forward.
Visit the MSBA website for the dates and times for all of the training opportunities that Catherine mentioned. One of those opportunities will be during MSBA's Summer Summit in June. It plans now to attend June 16th through the 18th in Branson at the exciting new venue for this year, the Hilton Branson Convention Center on the Landing. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. The summit's general session features Gene Becker, who was President George H.W. Bush's Chief of Staff for nearly 25 years. She's the editor of Pearls of Wisdom by Barbara Bush and the New York Times bestselling author of The Man I Knew. Her latest book is Character Matters and Other Life Lessons from George H.W. Bush. Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. Registration information for the Summer Summit is also posted on the MSBA website. And finally, if you follow MSBA's Facebook page, and you may have seen that Neo Show had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a brand-new state-of-the-art agricultural center on May 1st. Watch the Facebook page for that full story coming soon. Like and follow the MSBA page to see stories of the amazing things happening in Missouri's schools every day. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in June for the next MSBA Board Report.
Anything further? No sir. All right. All right, we have no visitors tonight, so we'll move on to discussion items. And first up is Dr. Miller with Professional Development Program Evaluation.
Thank you. So every year, we present the Professional Development Program Evaluation. Just to talk a little bit about how we've grown, just as a reminder, our Professional Development Committee is made up of elected teachers from each building that represent their peers in helping us to make decisions in not only what we should focus on in professional development, but how we should spend professional development money that is required by the state. So this is one of the committees that we support that is a requirement of meeting that expectation by the state for professional development funds. They actually do an outstanding job of setting program goals. I will say, when I first got here, it's changed quite a bit in the last four years. We are absolutely fully aligned with our CSIP goals, not only district CSIP goals, but building goals as well. That's one of the most important things that they do. We also give multiple modes of professional learning. So for example, we offer a summer academy. We offer one day where we guarantee that teachers can go get professional development for at least one hour after school. They use a lot of those for career ladder purposes in acquiring those hours. One of the things that we do as far as it's changed a little bit in the last four years is we have much more varied levels from one teacher to another. We have a huge focus on growing our new teachers. Some of them need a little bit more support than I think just sheer numbers of new teachers that we have with our buildings. I have a saying, and I push everyone in the Professional Development Committee, and that's everybody deserves to grow, whether you're a first-year teacher or whether you're a 31-year teacher. Everyone deserves to get professional development. It's tailored directly to them. Our Professional Development Committee does an outstanding job of just offering as much as they can. Each building creates a targeted area that aligns with their building improvement plans. PDC meets with their principals to make sure that PDC is aligned. Everything's just a real circle of getting a teacher what they need. I typically, this is going to be my 20th year. I've never rated anything excellent. This is the first year that I truly believe that this program is excellent and deserves that excellent rating. There are several reasons why, but really, in alignment with that CSIP and our building improvement plan, they truly respond to the teachers that are in front of them and change what they're doing from year to year to meet the needs. Instructional strategies are in place district-wide. Last year, we did three instructional strategies that you can walk in and clearly see in action in any of our classrooms. Those instructional strategies are really focused on student engagement, so it doesn't matter if you're a kindergarten teacher or you're teaching seniors in high school, they all matter. Also, we worked with Dr. Everett and kind of balanced with PDIS and our engagement strategies. I think the combo, rather than just addressing student behaviors from just the PDIS standpoint, and then instructional focus, they really go hand-in-hand, and we've seen like an incredible decline to our student discipline referrals. The less student discipline referrals that a kid has, the more time they spend in classroom learning. So again, they go hand-in-hand. One of the things that I truly believe is important for our teachers is to try to put them in leadership positions where they are teaching other teachers how to be as successful as they do, as they are. You can bring other people in from outside of the district to educate and inform your teachers and to change your practice. I believe the best teachers, instructional strategies are the teachers that we have on staff. They're excellent at it. Also, it pushes their passion, and again, that's one of the ways that we use to make some of our more veteran teachers grow. They're really taking on a leadership position and being able to share what they've learned in the classroom. Concerns regarding the program, something that we're always aware of. Science education is a big focus. We're introducing some new science curriculum, so finding professional development opportunities for staff to get all of the training necessary. Over the next two days, we're meeting with representatives of each school, and they're looking at the curriculum that come up of all of the instructional components to deliver to teachers next year. Literacy, again, is just an enormous focus. A lot of time is spent on reading success plans and a lot of the things that the state is driving right now. So we're completely aware of, we're respectful of the time that it takes in order to do that and make that happen. By far, the biggest challenge to professional learning in the district is the amount of teacher attrition that we have, continually making sure that all of our staff are trained. Not just in all of the programs, but really, we have a different way of doing things, the culture of Excelsor Springs. So even if you don't need a mentor or you've been a teacher for a lot of years, we still assign them a building partner to make sure they kind of know how we do things here in Excelsor Springs. For example, if you go to other districts, their graduation looks different. Their homecoming looks different. There are just some things that are very specific to us as far as tradition. So that's one of the things that we take care of as well. I know that in one of our buildings, I think I was speaking to a principal, and 50% of the teachers at that building will be in their first or second year at Excelsor Springs School District. That poses a huge challenge to get them all of the support that they need while being... I'll be honest, I am really worried, and I'm very aware that I don't want to abuse our veteran teachers. I want to make sure that they get an opportunity to grow and to work on whatever they need to do to improve instructionally as well. So those are the challenges. Again, just wanted to present that to the board. This is one of the program evaluations that the auditor looks for and that we do submit to the state. So this is one of the rare ones where I do need an approval of the program evaluation for Professional Development Committee. I'm happy to answer any questions. Do you have any?
For the PDC committee, do they get any career ladder hours for it and/or stipends?
Good question. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yeah.
At this time, I entertain a motion, and then we'll get a second question.
Yep.
First by Darren, second by Jill. No questions or comments?
So your question was, do they have qualified career ladder? So I ask them every year, they get to vote on... We have 1% of our funding goes towards professional development. That's a state law that we have to do. So I don't want to say it's challenging for me to spend that money, because you can ask anyone at Central Office cabinet-wise. It's not challenging for me to spend money at all on the kids. I'm quite good at it. But one of the things that I do, I do give our members the option to either utilize career ladder hours or to take a stipend. The majority of the people who are working so hard for professional development are also the same people who have more than enough career ladder hours. So they should always choose the stipend, because they're just the type of high-performing teachers that typically never run out of opportunities, and they have no problem meeting the expectation to get all of their career ladder hours. The other one that gets a stipend that comes out of professional development are mentors in our mentoring program. We pay them out of that as well. So right now, I believe that those are the only two ways you can be on a committee or do something that actually you earn a stipend rather than career ladder hours. Good question.
And then the teachers that are on the PDC. And then your, the teachers that are on the PDC, how are they selected to be on there? And then, did you lose any of your great ones this year based on some of the, you know?
So I'm happy to say, like, I had some turnover, but I didn't lose any to attrition. Like, they are, I love this committee, they are our veteran teachers, they are the voice of the teachers in our buildings, and for the most part, they're our diehard Tigers that have been there. I love it when we have a first or second or third year. I always tell a first year teacher, I don't really think you should be on a committee because it's enough to just get through your first year. We welcome it, but right now, we have a really strong veteran group of teachers that are on it. And what was your other question? How are they chosen? So they actually hold an election and they put their name in. Our PDC president, or actually, our co-chairs run an election and their peers vote on them. I have nothing to do with it, they tell me who's on the committee, so it's wonderful. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
You have a question, Brad?
Yeah, just a, am I on or off?
Okay, you have it.
Yeah, I thank you for the presentation. I think it's great, whatever we can do to support our teachers' development. Just wondering from a funding perspective, we have to spend 1% of state monies as you described. Do we spend exactly that? Do we spend more than that?
So I always budget over, but literally, so Dr. Tomlinson can tell you that every budget is a guess. At the beginning of the year, I make a guess as to how much I think that 1% is going to be. About this time of year, I go in and talk to Alice and say, how did it turn out? What is our 1% that we have to spend? She gives us a goal. I'm pretty good, I'm pretty close, like, I'm pretty close. I have a little bit more spending to do and so what I do is throughout the year, I create a wish list. So for example, our literacy workbooks, wit and wisdom is a program that we use, so I can always, I know that we'll always need more workbooks or more student consumables. So I'll buy stuff like that. Training materials, I think any teacher in the district will tell you, I love to buy educational books. When I was an instructional coach, I don't know how much of my own money I spent on building my own personal library, so every instructional coach, principal, send me a wish list, all of that to support Professional Development, so.
So we're generally spending right around that 1%?
Yeah, I don't, if I'm, it's not like I go over, I can't go under, we can actually get penalized for that, but I'm a pretty good guesser at it. It doesn't change significantly from one year to the next.
I would say from a process standpoint, we don't really focus on the 1%, what we do is we try to build what the budget needs to be for what the needs are that year, and then once that's built, then we go and see, okay, have we met, at least are we over this? So we really focus on what the needs are first, and then we kind of double check second to say, hey, have we met our statutory requirements? So, and that can change obviously as the year goes, but we're always making sure that we're over.
Yeah, I don't like start the year by budgeting the 1% of money. Honestly, I just spend it as we need it, and I'm pretty good at kind of getting a feel for what we need to spend and what we don't. I have some big ticket item type things, like our summer academy is probably a big expenditure. That's where every teacher, including new teachers, is invited to do kind of a choose your own adventure really on what Professional Development they want to do. There are a lot of different things and even after, I've been on the Professional Development Committee as a teacher and as, you just kind of get a feel for it, so, yeah.
Yeah, again, my intent with the question wasn't to count pennies, it was to, you know, make sure we're funding this to give the right opportunity.
I have, yes, I am, I always have extra, I don't ever spend it if I have it. I think that Dr. Tomlinson and I have a relationship where I know if I need it, I just ask for it. I don't, I don't know about my next superintendent, I have a feeling he's going to give me anything I want, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval. Next up is approval of the 25-26 fiscal year budget.
I'm very excited to present this tonight. This has been the most enjoyable budget I've ever been able to put together, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about the process, so. I want to give you to everyone who came to see the exciting aspect of next year's budgets. It really reflects some of our core values and that's collaboration and fiscal responsibility. You know, we began with a collaborative process, we gather input from teachers, staff, parents, and community members. We do this through surveys, open discussions, we identify some shared priorities, we also listen to what the needs are from our staff. What we really wanted to focus on was our student achievement, our staff support, and a safe, modern learning environment. So this year's budget focuses on strengthening academic programs, supporting student wellness, maintaining small class sizes, and investing in technology and facilities. Each priority was matched with a funding source and we made sure every dollar aligns with our mission. We also committed to fiscal responsibility, and that means reducing non-essential expenses, monitoring spending on a monthly basis, applying for grants, and maximizing every available resource. We've kept reserves healthy and made long-term sustainability a guiding principle. Looking ahead, our budget isn't just a spreadsheet full of numbers, it's really a shared vision amongst all of the stakeholders within the community. With continued transparency and collaboration, we're going to adapt, improve, and ensure every student gets the best possible education that we can provide. So wanted to thank the board and everyone who helped contribute to this budget for your support, the feedback, and most of all, the partnership. You know, really, it was very engaging over the last week. I had probably over a dozen emails back and forth answering questions about the budget and questions about, what does this mean, or why has that gone there, or why has this change happened? And I really appreciated that kind of opportunity to interact with you guys and kind of help guide you through what the thinking was and how this has come to fruition, so. That being said, I wanted to kind of highlight some of the budget and kind of walk through some of the pieces. The biggest thing we wanted to do is, given the current state of revenues, there's two aspects to any budget, revenues and expenditures, okay? Revenues, we don't have that much control over, okay? We're kind of beholden to what the federal government does and to what the state government decides. The state just passed their budget this week, hasn't been signed by the governor yet, so we're going to keep an eye on that and see exactly what moves forward. So far, the legislature's passed a fully funded formula, so that will be helpful for us. We're going to take a look at specifically what that money means, that's already been accounted for in this budget, so it's not like it's going to be an additional revenues from what we've already planned here. The thing that we have the most control over is our expenditures. Now, the difficult aspect about expenditures in this market is obviously it's been very high inflation lately. All of our bills are going up, so if you take a look at our contracted services, you'll notice about an 18% increase in our budget. Well, that's because food service and transportation are both contracted, those have both gone up. But that's not the only thing, all of our utilities, our sewer, water, electrical, gas, all gone up. So we're seeing all of our contracted services that we have other outside agencies who bring people in, all of those expenditures have gone up. So the current inflationary rate is around 15 to 18% on all of our expenditures outside of just personnel, okay? At the same time, we wanted to give a step to all employees, that's about a 2% hit for us to increase salaries for a step increase. We kept the, we did pay the $200,000 to help buy down the health insurance rates for our staff, they still had a 4.9% increase each staff will have to take on individually, so that's a hit to them. We did have a slight increase in the dental benefit, it was about $2.50 a month per employee per month, and the district is planning to take that on, assuming the board approves that. So those are some of the big highlights from what we're doing, we did not adjust the salary schedule, we really don't have the money in the budget to be able to address salaries, that's why we went out for a levy, and the community had spoken quite loudly that they didn't want to support any additional taxes for staff salaries, so there's going to be some decisions that lie ahead in the coming years as far as how do we allocate money to increase staff salaries in order to keep and retain, not just retain, but even recruit? So there's going to be those opportunities as well. I will say that everything said and done, when we finished this budget, we came in at just about 1%, about 1 and 1/4% below what last year's budget was on expenditures. So not only have we kind of amended our budget and kind of dealt with everything from an inflationary standpoint, we've had some reductions in staff, we've reduced I think over 15 positions in the last couple of years, but we've done some other things to try to tighten up our budget as much as humanly possible, to try to bring in a budget that was the same or just under where we've been the last two years, and we've accomplished that with this budget, so we're very excited about that. There's an important distinction we have to make between where Excelsior Springs is today and where we can be in a couple of years, and I think it's important for us to start having these discussions and these opportunities, so. A lot of people say, well, there's going to be all these cuts coming if this levy doesn't pass, I heard, I heard people talking about that. Well, that may be true, but that's not true right now. We're going to stay the course for right now because we have enough funding to go ahead and keep doing what we were doing. We're okay there. The issue is, there's an arms race going on with public school districts, so who's going to get the best teachers, the best principals, the best administrators? And we have to understand that that market is changing beneath our feet right now. So in the future, we're going to continue to lose staff to other districts who are going to pay more than us. If we don't have increased funding to support that, the only way to support that is going to be through cuts, so the board is going to have to make a decision in the coming years that either we're going to stay on this status quo and just say, we're going to go get the best we can, do the best we can, or we're going to have to take some steps to improve those areas to compete with some of these other districts that we fight for resources over. The pipeline for new teachers coming into education is thin, it has been waning over the last couple of years, I anticipate that to continue as long as salaries don't keep up with private practice. So we're going to probably continue to see struggles in that area. The number one thing we can do to help education for our kids is put a quality teacher in front of them, number one thing. So that's a big important ask. Also, the budget, you'll know sometimes there's some big swings. If you look at some of the changes, you know, I have here a delta column as a percent change, and it refers to where we were at last year and where we're at this year. Well, if you take a look at our facilities and you're like, whoa, how'd you knock 85% off the budget? That's amazing. Like, no, we're just not building another elementary this year. So it's, there's simple reasons why things can fluctuate a great deal. Sometimes things might be up 2,000% because maybe they're at $500 and now they're at $10,000. So you have to kind of, the context is important and it does matter, so. Wanted to take a look at that. I did receive a lot of questions from some board members concerning revenue expenses or I guess expectations, and the biggest thing I can say to that is, we had a decline in our assessed valuation for personal property last year, so that was a decline, that's hitting our local, that's why you see our local down a little bit. We also have less weighted ADA currently, so we're really focusing on our attendance. Our attendance has been great the last couple of years. I don't know if you remember, it used to be in the 70s, now we're up around 90% in all of our buildings. That's been a huge, and that's a really important aspect to being on the formula. Before, we'll hold harmless, didn't quite matter as much, but. Can you do it for me, Leroy?
Yeah.
You want to go to the first page of the budget, it says 25-26 right there. So you can take a look there, our total revenue, we're expecting a slight decline, our expenditures right in line with where we've been before, if you subtract out the amount of money that went into building those. So we're going to just hold steady, that's the proposal that I've put in place for you. If you take a look, you scroll down to the next page. If you take a look, there's only, the budget I sent you guys last week, there's only one change on here, it was actually a code didn't copy over for 2024, it was last year's number, down under federal programs, it was 268-510, and this year's is 272, that was the only change we had, there was, Dr. Everett was kind enough to find that typo and got me to correct it, so I just wanted to point that out. Otherwise, everything you received last week is still accurately depicted in here. Some of the big changes we had, student activities were inflated the last couple of years, we kind of just set those out because we were going to do whatever we had to for activities, but I went through and actually pulled all the actuals for this year and tightened those up quite a bit, so that was why there was quite a reduction in there, that was just kind of a housekeeping item to get more specific on what we actually spend per year. The same thing was true for community, it had a community that actually went up, but that was again, I pulled all those from actuals to see how we're performing. Those are probably the two biggest areas where I saw changes. These are split out over here by object codes, so they're split it out by the different buildings, different programs, different activities, but you can get a sense for how many different people have ownership or managerial responsibilities over these different areas, so each of them had a part in participating in the construction of this budget. So at this time, I would ask the board for approval of the 25-26 budget as presented.
All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the 26 fiscal year budget.
I move that we table approval of the 2025-26 budget and that the board hold a work session on the budget prior to considering approval at the next board meeting currently scheduled for, for June. I think one of our most important responsibilities is overseeing finances as a district, and I'm very appreciative to Dr. Tomlinson and the administration's answers to the more than a few questions I've asked the last few days. I just, I think it's important that we allocate proper time and opportunity for us to understand this, number one, and for us to collaboratively ask questions and provide feedback as a collective board. I just, I want to be comfortable with what we're approving. I want to be able to look a community member in the eyes or a staff member in the eyes and say, I have confidence that this budget allocates our resources in a way that best, you know, meets the needs of our students. I want to be very clear, I'm not, in making this motion, I'm not saying or implying or inferring, et cetera, that the proposed budget does not meet those needs. I just would like more time for us to be comfortable, to go through a process and have an opportunity to, you know, to be more deliberate with our, you know, our questions and our feedback. You know, more time and process also lets us have an opportunity to educate our community. You know, there's a lot of people maybe listening, you know, and they say, we've got a big property tax increase, you know, why are revenues going down when I'm expecting I'm going to pay more taxes? For example, I just think going through this process puts more visibility on the budget, on the financial realities we face, and that's a good, again, educational opportunity. So for this reason, I ask you to support the motion to table and the board hold a budget work session to cover this in more detail.
Questions, comments? I guess we can do that right after this.
Do we have it before the June morning?
Yeah. Can we set a workshop?
Yeah.
Yeah. After we vote on this motion. So we have a motion on the table in a second. I don't hear any questions or concerns, so all those in favor of the motion to table the budget approval, just making sure I get it right, okay? Table in the budget approval and holding a concurrent workshop prior to the June board. I know that's not everything we said, but.
That seems nice.
All those in favor? That passes 5-0. Okay, now we just want to do that before we move on to Mr. Marshall, Mr. Baker. Board meeting is what, the 24?
24.
June 3rd or June 10? What works for you?
I'm out of the country, June 10.
June 10. Cancel your trip. June 10?
June 10.
Darren? June 10, 5:30? Right? Right here? Yeah, I'm just trying to get the details ironed out. June 10, 5:30, four. Do I have a motion to approve that? First by Jill?
Second.
Second by Tracy. All those in favor? And that passes 5-0. 5:30. All right, moving on now. Next up is approval of the pack curtain bid. Mr. Marshall, Mr. Baker. You guys can do a law firm, Marshall and Baker, like doing cheating in the house.
Just a few more years before I have to retire first.
He can get started. Get some customers in there.
That's right. First and foremost, thank you very much, Board of Education, distinguished guests for allowing us to come up here and speak this evening, presenting a bid for our Performing Arts Center curtains. In summary, our Performing Arts Center curtains are in desperate need of being updated. The current curtains are original to the facility, have significant wear and tear, and have become no longer fire resistant, creating a huge safety concern for not only our students and staff, but also our community who uses our Performing Arts Center. Performing Arts Center personnel and building administration viewed the bid. Performing Arts Center personnel and building administration viewed the bids to replace all existing curtains. The replacing, replacement of the curtains would be of similar material, style, and color. The only visible change would be the large main curtain would no longer be green, but dark gray. The funding for this would be forty-seven thousand, eight-hundred, two dollars and thirty cents. That money would be coming from a specific location in which there's been fifty thousand dollars budgeted for this project. So at this time, I would ask the board to approve the pack curtain bid as presented.
Do we have a first? Do we have a second?
Second.
I thought Kristen, second or not? I looked at, I saw your hand.
I could just flip my hair.
She's in favor.
She's really excited about the great first.
Jill was the second, sorry.
Yes, I can.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question. I know this is a little tricky because we're getting ready to talk about the capital, you know, projects, but I'm wondering if that could be part of that, the spend that we have to, from the interest from Lewis's money? Like, is this something, instead of coming out of another fund that's already been preset?
It would.
It will.
Yes, it will.
So, you're thinking that?
Yes.
Yeah, we need to find ways, and this was a perfect opportunity, for about fifty grand to come from that money. So it'll save actually from their budget. We had budgeted fifty thousand dollars in there, but that will actually remain in that, in there, which will help out with the deficit for next year.
I do have a question. Does it come like with a warranty or a guarantee?
So, yeah, so the curtains originally purchased were twenty-five-year curtains. That's this year, basically. The curtains that we're purchasing will be another twenty-five-year curtain. The big difference is the material's slightly different. Their current curtains are cotton. The new curtains will be synthetic, which will remain fire resistant for up to twenty-five years. Our current curtains, which are cotton, had to be sprayed and or altered every five to ten years, up until twenty-five years, and then they're no longer used. So that's where, kind of where we're at with that.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
I know that this is specific to the curtains. Can we ask, are there other things that we're going to be doing to the PAC Center anytime soon? Or is this not a good time to ask that? It's kind of the asking trait.
You can ask, I don't, I don't know the...
Is it appropriate to ask that, is one of those?
Yeah.
So, yeah, at this time, discussing with our Performing Arts Center personnel, one thing they are wanting to do is move the soundboard from back in that back room to being present in the auditorium area with the updates and speakers and how they're aligned. It's really tough for you to get the experience or the soundboard controller to get the experience that the audience does back in the back booth. So, we've been, myself, Xavier, Julia, and then Barry, or Anthony Barry, thank you, have been talking about kind of ways that we can do that to make it better for not only our participants and our people in the auditorium, but the person running the soundboard as well. We have discussed where that funding would come from, that it would be a very large project that our Barry, Anthony, and the PAC personnel would do themselves. So working on some logistics and kind of how to get that done at this point.
We would use the existing soundboards. So, they would literally, you know, take them out, set them up when we had the big performances. But, for security reasons, we can take them back up and put them in the closed room.
I was just surprised that the curtains are original to the space.
I was too, he said that, I was like, "Original?"
And, so, I just think it's such a wonderful space, and whatever we can do to continue to, like, enhance it and make it appealing to the community and other sources for potential revenue and just our, our students, I just think, I'm totally in favor of it, if we have the funds to do so.
All right, any other questions, comments? All those in favor? And that passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I, we have a discussion of cyber fraud.
I don't know what you guys wanted to discuss for this, but I'm happy to address whatever questions you guys have.
I think it was more of what we put in place to kind of prevent training or...
I'm actually gonna pass that to Dr. Baltimore, who has some background.
How much you're having?
Yeah, I can speak to some of that. So I worked with John Coleman, who's our technology director, just to get some of this. So I promised him I would try and speak intelligently to all this and not embarrass him, so I will do my best. So the incident that happened then was a sophisticated phishing attempt executed through a compromised account of one of our vendors. So, we have new multi-verification redundancies using multiple people if there are change requests or payment requests. So that's what we're doing on that end. As far as the technology and cybersecurity, there are all kinds of things that we're doing and have enacted prior to and then since two thousand twenty-one. So I have a list of those things that I'll kind of go to, go through. So password rules, that was updated. In the spring of two thousand twenty-five, all passwords be at least fourteen characters, so that helps. I think you said it takes a hundred years or something crazy like that to bust through that, so that adds one step. There's two-step verifications. So after that attempt, it was strongly recommended that all admin-level employees utilize two-step verification. So this became mandatory for all ESSD staff in the spring of two thousand twenty-three. So that's another step that we use. Technology sends out emails several times a year speaking on email safety and to be on the lookout for suspicious emails. Example email below. He did say, "I'm a perfect example of, example of a good user, because if I get an email that I don't know, I screenshot it and say, 'Hey, is this real or not?'" So he gets those from me. So a lot of times what just happens is a user error on the end. So it's training our staff to be prepared, to look for those things. Also, communication is sent out when there's a known phishing email. So he's a part of a consortium and a group that they'll get, "Hey, there's this phishing thing going around." So he'll send examples of that out and give staff a heads up on that. So other cybersecurity is practiced by the district. So cybersecurity training is part of the annual vector training for all employees. So those are the safety, security, vector training videos that staff loves going through before the school year starts. Music, who's our insurance provider, requires us to follow their seven-step cybersecurity framework for coverage. Daily network and system monitoring happens, looking for any suspicious or abnormal activity. Email alerts are used to notify if any suspicious activity or systems that are not functioning properly. Mr. Coleman did say that Gmail is really good at recognizing those things and having them anti-phishing. So he, he does appreciate the fact that we do utilize Google and their suite of options. All users with elevated access, so your admin level access, the systems must use the two-factor authentication, as we discussed. We use securely web filtering on all district accounts, both for students and staff. So that helps with some of the district web filtering. Firewall protection of the district network that is monitored daily. We use Soto's endpoint detection on all district MacBooks, desktops, and servers, and that system scans for viruses and malware to catch them before they're executed or installed. All student devices, iPads, Chromebooks, are managed by the district. Only approved apps and extensions can be installed by students. So they kind of give a, there's an app they can go to if it's a district-approved app. They can go to that and then download from there. So they can only download district-approved things that have gone through the request process. And then installation of critical patches by technologies that become available. Monthly updates to our Windows servers. Technology also subscribes, subscribes to reputable agencies that provide updates and warnings of possible attacks on our systems. No district users can add or remove software without elevated privileges or technology approval. So even an admin, if I'm gonna add something to my computer or my MacBook or my iPad, I have to go through the proper channels to make sure they can check that and it's approved and it's gone through that security process that it needs to. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, each building will have a thirty-minute PD on email safety and best practices. So that'll be something that Mr. Coleman and his technology team will be delivering to all staff, so that should be helpful. And then we will never ask users individually to change their passwords via email. So that's a big one, I guess, that goes around to all corporations, is you get an email saying, "Please change your password," or submit it in this Google Doc. So he has reiterated to all staff quite frequently, and he wanted to make sure I highlighted that, that staff will never receive an email asking them to input or change their passwords in a Google Doc or some other form of systems. So, those are just some of the many things that we're doing and continue to do and try and update. He said it really is an arms race of trying to keep up with what they're trying to do versus what we're trying to do. So those are just a few of the things, or many of the things as a district that we're trying to do to prevent something like this from happening.
So, that thirty-minute training, then it'll probably happen when everybody returns back to school?
Yeah, yeah, it'll work with Billy and then I'm...
He's gonna rotate through the rooms. It'll be face-to-face for both classified answers.
So they get a video and a face-to-face.
He's passionate about passwords. Passionate. I thought that about fourteen characters.
Yeah.
Can we also just get a brief update on, like, I was hearing about that for the first time last meeting as well, and I didn't have any context to it. And so when I was asked as a board member after the meeting, like, "How come we as a community didn't know about this?" I didn't know either. My guess is that it was covered and closed, and then it showed up in open or something, I don't know. Is there context that we can give around that for why the community didn't know that there was, that money was taken through a cyber phishing expedition?
Thinking back, KCAB was threatening to sue us, we were suing them because it was their hack type thing. And so it stayed illegal. This has been four years ago now, so, but that's the reason why, and then everybody just worked out and settled. So I think that's why it always stayed in closed session for all that time, because it was always pending, you know, what's gonna happen, and then, to be honest with you, I forgot all about it until they said they caught the girl, you know.
Back to protect the...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Holden, for helping. All right, next up is approval of capital projects for May twenty-five. Dr. Thomas?
So I just wanted to give an update on where we were at, kind of the latest and greatest for where we're trying to spend our Lewis, our remaining Lewis lease purchase money. So, the biggest curveball that came was we had two estimates on the high school parking lot. Both were around eight hundred thousand dollars, so that's what we were kind of planning to have to spend. And we're like, "Okay, we can do that, we can do this roof." Bam, we're there. Well, we went out to bid, low bid came back in at four hundred fifty-five thousand. So all of a sudden, we're like, "Whoa, we have another couple hundred thousand we're gonna have to spend, looking to split." You think it's a good problem, but boy, it's a lot of these funds, so it won't come from the activities department budget. We have our final bill from New Kirk Novak that's gonna be eighty-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars. And that will pay, that also counts for the labor to install the wall coverings that will be input in Elkhorn and Cornerstone, that'll happen this summer. And then also for maintenance, a new aerial lift, which is so they can change light bulbs and get up to the ceilings and the gyms and things. We typically rent those every year, and so things will have to remain broken or stay an issue until the next rental time for us to fix those. And so we, we found one of those for an amount that would put us just over the one-point-one-six-two million that we have to spend. It puts us about nine thousand dollars over what's left in the budget or the account for UMB. So we'll have that spent, and then just a little bit more. I wanted to go over just a pair, just to be, just to be sure, I didn't want to cut it too close, it wasn't worth it. So that's kind of what the plan is. So, if I can get the board to approve that, and that's, oh, I also have some vehicles too. We're gonna look at getting some vehicles to upgrade the, or I guess more modernize the maintenance, some of their trucks, we're gonna get a couple trucks too. So, that'll, that in total is gonna land us at, I think, nine thousand, three hundred dollars over what's left in the UMB account that we have to spend. But in doing this, here's a couple of things that'll come from, that'll be actually very beneficial for Dr. Baltimore. And next year's budget is going to be, we typically budget some money for vehicles. He won't have to spend that, so that'll be some money that'll help make up the deficit. And then also, it'll help with some of the maintenance issues, because we'll have new things, they'll be under warranty, and then it'll also help with just what's going forward for next year. So it'll give him a little bit more flexibility with what's going on, because he won't have to come up with some of these things to pay for, since it's coming out of the lease purchase money. It won't come out of the own budget money. So that should help.
Entertain a motion to approve, first by Jill. Second, second, Darren. Can you explain why it sounds like a mad brush to spend this money?
Sure.
It is and it's not.
It is and it's not, right? So, we don't know how much money we're gonna have until the end of the project. So we're still getting invoices in from our architects and our builders. So, until we were able to kind of really get a feel for when we were at our final budget and see what was left, we also had to take a look at how much money we earned in interest. Almost all of the money that we're spending right now is money we earned in interest from investing the lease purchase money. So, we knew this was gonna come at the end. We thought we had a plan, because we're like, "Oh, high school parking lot, roof, bam, one-point-one, we're good, we're golden." Well, if you go out to bid and it comes in at half of what everyone told you it was gonna cost, well, all of a sudden, now I gotta find, you know, three or four hundred thousand dollars of, of projects to spend and have it done and paid for all...
And these chairs, and I'm, you know, hearing about our financial challenges, and I'm hearing about, "Oh, we've gotta spend this money," and it didn't make sense to me. And I met one of the community members, had the same question, so, you know, thank you. And it was like a creative way to use our finances, which I appreciate.
Yeah, well, we're trying to, you gotta come up with different ideas to be flexible, so we're trying to maximize everything we can.
All right, all those in favor? And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Last up is approval of the wellness program evaluation. Dr. Everett?
Yes, thank you. The wellness committee, just to, before we go much further, is, I think sometimes people think it's our nursing, our health services program, and it's not. We, that was a different program evaluation. Kind of opposite of the PDC committee, which is very formal and run by the state, the district wellness committee is definitely a less formal group. Ultimately, they get to, we get some money from our district insurance provider for wellness incentives, different things that we earn, and so this committee gets to do all the fun stuff to figure out how to spend that money and give it back to staff members. So, in, in years past, really, the, this evaluation is really just focused on some of the things that have to do with our insurance, like how many people get flu shots, and how many people get biometric screenings, and those types of things, but that's really not the work that the committee does. It's great, we really want people to do all those things, but the committee is doing the work to try to bring information to staff, to create fun incentives for them to participate, to create a more healthy lifestyle. Because like we've heard, you know, we as a district do better when our staff is healthier, and everyone's adults. We can't control people's habits, but we can definitely try to encourage healthy habits. So this committee is eighteen members, teachers, nurses, just classified staff members, and they meet regularly, five to seven times. I think they had seven meetings this year. But they really just create some fun challenges, like in September, they did a SEP challenge. October, they did a mental health awareness event. In November, they educated on flu season, or, you know, the flu season and all of the challenges associated with that. December is probably the most popular incentive. That's, we did Wellness Bingo, and so that, we had, that was probably our biggest participation, where people then were awarded gift cards for getting their bingos, and so they would submit to our district nurse when they hit bingo, and it was just a lot of fun. And then, one of the things that they were really focusing on this year was to create a wellness event, a community event. And so they were partnering with student council to do the reindeer run, and so they had such, like, really great... And they were...
To me, didn't warrant an above-average score, because if you look at the measurable items that were included in there, they took a decline. So for me, who's a numbers person, that didn't logically make sense to me. But I did get a chance to talk with Dr. Everett, and she did celebrate the work that the eight, you know, the individuals are doing on it. I think it's worth having the conversation about, so people know the good work that's being done around the program. I also asked for it to come out because it felt that it was a direct afface to what Dr. Tomlinson said two months ago or last month, when we had to buy down health insurance, where he said, "We are a very sick or not well district because of the amount of claims that we have." So I felt like, again, that was a direct afface, so to have above average. So the conversation that we had, of which you just shared with everybody right now, the same context, is super helpful. One thing that I, that's not in there that I would ask, like, maybe would be worth considering that does play into what Dr. Tomlinson did say, is if we could maybe even do like a Did You Know series? And like, "Did you know that pick three, pick three prescription drugs that are the name brand? And did you know that if you, for a month, this costs this, this costs this, this costs this..." And did you know that if you chose the generic brand, it would cost this and this, right? Because I, that does help our insurance.
Yeah, and Dr. Tomlinson.
It's different than.
Well, Dr. Tomlinson and Dr. Baltimore both send those out district-wide from the NEUHP. They do send those like helpful tips and a lot of times even, even though that's not us giving away the awards, it's like if you submit your answer to this NEUHP, then we will select, someone will be selected for twenty-five dollar gift cards. And our people from our district win that a lot. So even though that is not like, that is district wellness, it's not coming from the wellness committee. But I do think that is relevant to district wellness. And so moving forward, again, this is something that's new to my umbrella, that I think with the committee, you know, our district nurse, Blaney and I have been working very collaboratively the last six months to kind of relaunch a lot of things in twenty-five, twenty-six. And so this is one of those pieces, it's like having a more comprehensive plan for how the committee can work with district wellness just in general. I think will, will go a long way. So I, I definitely feel like they have really done a lot of great work. But I feel like we can really, you know, move the needle moving forward too.
And then, you know, we can't have any topic without a conversation about career ladder. Do you think that the career ladder allowance is adequate that you had last year? And is it being looked at that maybe those?